Good morning. This is the City Council Work Session for Monday, October 4th, 2021. It is a little after 10:00 and we'll get started. Our first item today is the Historic Preservation Commission applicant interviews. And we'll get started on that. John Horn. If you would, come up, state your name, your address, John, and give us a little information about yourself.
So I'm John Horn. I live at 62 748 Highway 90. So I live out of town, but my wife and I own a building downtown and she runs Fabula. So that's my connection with the city. So I work for Alpine Archaeology. I'm mostly retired now, but was one of the founders of Alpine back in 1987 and have lived in Montrose since 1984. And then helped Virgil work up to get the Historic Commission underway and then have been on the, I've been the chairman of the commission since it started in 2018.
Well, good. I think it's got to be interesting dealing with old things. You know, kind of like a couple of us up here. But I know that you guys have worked for, did you say speak for yourself? John, I know that you guys have been involved. Could you tell us a little bit about some of the projects that you've, we've been doing over the Historic Commission?
Yeah, we've actually gotten off to a very good start. I can't remember how many buildings we now have listed locally, but all the properties that are owned by the city are now listed. And I think that's a great way for the city to show support of the program. Because if you, you know, have your buildings listed, then maybe that will encourage other people to get theirs listed. We have the Potato Growers, Montrose Potato Growers Building listed, and it's also listed on the National Register. And the Vine Building, which is actually earlier than Missouri Building, and the building next door, which was the Buddekin Deal Building, are the properties that were listed by people other than the city. And so we're hoping that we'll get more properties listed. Every year, we're able to apply for a $25,000 grant through a certified local government program. And so it's Park Service money that comes to us by way of the History Colorado. And so we were able to use that money initially to do a Historic Preservation Plan. And so we have that available for the public to look at, and it's kind of our guiding document for how we're moving forward. And so the first thing that we're working on that was a priority in the plan was to evaluate the historical significance of Tortilla Flats. And we thought that was an important area to look at first because of the development that's going nearby and the likelihood that the neighborhood is going to be changing. So we're doing, we have a contractor who is doing oral interviews and looking at properties there. And we'll have a report from them sometimes, I think, towards the end of the year with recommendations on how to move forward. Hopefully, they'll identify some way that we can have some kind of a designation, historic designation, for that neighborhood that will hopefully bring some money towards the neighborhood. But I think the most important thing is to give recognition to the historical importance of that community, to the town of Montrose.
And I believe, John, is anything 50 years and older falls into the historic category?
Yeah, that's typically the period of time that is considered to be historic. When we did the Historic Preservation Plan, we tried to do things that were 45 years or older because we wanted it to not be dated soon. So it's really kind of a 10 or 20-year plan that we have. And we have lots of different tasks involved with what we can do for the Historic Commission can do for the future.
And it has to be stationary, so David and I are safe, right?
Yeah, and I'm safe, too.
David, do you have any questions?
I really don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you for your service to this community by serving on this very important commission. We appreciate everything that you have done.
Yeah, it's been a fun thing to do. It's something that I thought that Montrose needed for a while to be able to designate our own properties, because it then allows you a lot of flexibility in going for other grants and that kind of thing. So, and we've been able to do that. And yeah, it's fun to do things like this for your community.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Mayor, may I just note that John has also been the chair of our Historic Preservation Commission since its inception.
Amanda Lloyd? All right. Are you going to pick anything up? We're trying to get your sound to come in, Amanda. Give us just a minute. If you'd like to start singing the Star's Bengal Banner, then he can tell when he picks Amanda, please make sure that you're unmuted on your speaker. Amanda, doesn't seem like we're getting any vocal from you. Why don't we move on and we'll come back to it later, or if necessary, we'll catch it tomorrow evening? Anne, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd just say, Amanda, if you can hear me, so sorry. I see that you're in the middle of teaching, and we really appreciate you taking the time to join us. I'm sorry we weren't able to get you, but what if we let you hang up and then we'll figure out another way to do your interview? Does that sound good, Mayor Glassbell?
That'd be fine.
And, okay, it sounds, looks like, I'm not sure Amanda can hang on much longer with her kids in her classroom.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Sorry about that. We'll be in touch. Okay. I'll just note that Amanda is a current member of our Historic Preservation Commission. She's been an excellent member. She joined us at the Saving Places Concert, Conference, it was not a concert, Saving Places Conference in 2020 in Denver, which at least one member of our commission is required to go to every year. And Amanda volunteered to be that person despite her teaching duties. She took time off work to join us there. So she's been a committed member of our Historic Preservation Commission.
All right. Thank you, Anne, for that information. Let's go on to Daniella Golt. Got. You would state your name and your address and get a little information on you.
Yeah, my name is Danielle Gott. I live at 901 6530 Road in Montrose. Been here for two years. I'm a retired architect and been on the board, Historic Preservation Board, for two years, too.
Okay. And do you have any comments to make about the historical buildings or any of the work that you guys have done?
Well, I think our history is important. I think saving our buildings is important. You know, we live in such a disposable society, even our, even our history has become indisposable. But it's who we were. And if we don't know who we were, how can we know where we're going? And that, that's something that's really important to me. And our historic buildings, they ground us to this, this community. I've only been here for two years, but I've practiced architecture in Phoenix, Arizona, and I did a lot with the historic neighborhoods there. Unfortunately, a lot of the times we're on the opposite side of it for my clients, trying to find the loopholes to get around it. But I think when we have historic buildings, yeah, it connects us to the past and it brings us a sense of ownership. I know my dad grew up in Holly, Minnesota, and I had the opportunity to go back there with him. And you know how your grandparents and your parents always said, "I walked five miles to get, you know, one way in the snow to get to school." He actually did. He actually did walk five miles to get to that one-room classroom. And, and he didn't show it to me, because he actually pulled over the side of the car and made me walk from where he lived to his one-room classroom. He didn't do that, you know, just to be a stinker. He did that because it was important to him. And it was important to him because he wanted me to know his life. And, and I found that experience rather eye-opening, because that's who my father was. That's, that help made him the man he was and the father he was. And if we keep disposing of our past and keep ripping down our buildings to make better our new ones, we lose that connection. And like I said, how can we better ourselves? For good or bad, our history is our history. We can learn from the good parts and we can learn from the bad parts. But how can we do that if it's no longer there?
Good. Just thank you for your very pertinent comments, very timely, and thank you for your service. All right. Thank you very much. Is Jeremy here? Just come up, state your name and address and give us a little information about yourself.
So, yeah, hi, I'm Jeremy Umvik. I live at 2801 Foxtail Way here in Montrose. I've, we've been in Montrose for 10 or 12 years now. I've been working as an archaeologist for the past 30 years. Currently, I work for the Natural Resources Conservation Service. I'm responsible for essentially the cultural resources for the western slope of Colorado. But previously, I worked at Alpine with John and some other, and some other folks who are on the commission as well. Yeah, I feel like, you know, I've, I've worked in historic preservation on a lot of different scales, you know, national, state, regional. But it's kind of my opinion that it really works best at a community level. So I'm kind of excited for the opportunity to be part of, you know, a strong local preservation commission, that you have the opportunity to kind of dictate or direct the, your attentions and what is, what things are important to the community, rather than having, being more reactive where it perhaps, a lot of cultural resources are done in response to cultural resources law, where you're reactive, you have projects where you need to document and potentially preserve cultural resources. But with the commission, you have, you have, you have the opportunity to really decide what's important to you and preserve things ahead of time and be more proactive.
David, do you have any questions?
No, but thank you for your comments also.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to thank those folks for coming in today for the interviews, and we'll be making that decision, I believe, us tomorrow evening. The next item we have is the Uncompagri Valley Alliance Children Care Need Assessment Results. And that's going to be by Ross Valdez.
Good morning, council. Today, we're going to have the Uncompagri Valley Alliance alongside Root Policy Research present the results of their childcare needs assessment that they conducted back in February of this year. City Council approved supporting this childcare needs assessment. They were able to collect over 700 survey responses, and they're here today to share a summary of what they were able to find.
Great. If you would, ladies, introduce yourselves. We're having a little technical difficulty. We're not picking up any audio this evening, this afternoon, this morning, I guess, this morning. Ross, would you like to give us some additional information? Do you have anything that you could provide if we can't?
Well, I think it would be best to hear it directly from Root Policy Research and from the Uncompagri Valley Alliance Childcare Caucus, just because they've invested so much time. In your packets, there is a one-page executive summary and report, but again, hopefully we can resolve this and get some of their, their feedback and comments, since they've worked very, very hard on getting these results and putting all this information together.
Is that the ice cream truck? Ladies, if you would try it again, make sure your audio is on, on your computer. Let's see if we can hear you.
Hello, I'm Rachel Valerio.
Good. If you'd like to go ahead, please, with your presentation.
Great. All right. Well, hi, everyone. I'm Rachel Valerio. I'm a member of the UVA Childcare Caucus, and I live here in Montrose. I believe it's hard to tell who's here on this webinar, but I think we have Kevin Williams and Carol Keeney also here from UVA. And Kathleen Merritt is here from Bright Futures. And then we also, I think we have Nick Allen, who is one of our organizers from Western Colorado Alliance. So we wanted to start off by thanking you all for the money that you invested in the childcare needs assessment. It was essential to the completion of this project. And next, I will go ahead and introduce Molly Fitzpatrick. Molly is one of two co-founders and managing directors of Root Policy Research. And Molly's been the lead consultant on this project and will be presenting the executive summary and the recommendations from the assessment today. So I'll hand it over to you, Molly.
Great. Thanks so much, Rachel, and hopefully you all can hear me just fine as well. So I'll just keep talking unless you say you can't. And I am going to actually share my screen so that I can walk you through kind of a quick presentation that really just focuses on some of the high-level results of the analysis in the executive summary. Of course, there is a full report that I believe you all have, have access to as well. And so there's, there's lots of details in that, which I will, I'll kind of gloss over today, but happy to take any additional questions that might arise as part of this presentation as we get towards the end. So I'll just walk you through kind of initially, you know, the, the objective really of this project is to look at, you know, what are the countywide childcare needs? Both in terms of where, how many children are being served currently by childcare in the community? How does that relate to what people actually want? And what are the needs of the community? We did that through data analysis, but also through a really extensive survey of parents and guardians across the county to understand what their perspectives were. We also interviewed and had focus groups with existing childcare providers, both providers who are licensed by the state, but also providers who are doing that informally, like nannies, you know, friends and family that are providing care as well. So lots of data points together. For those of you that would like to kind of spend a little more time in the report, this gives you a real high-level overview of how that's structured. So Section 1 really talks about the relevant demographic and socioeconomic and employment trends and how that relates to childcare needs. It also talks about the existing childcare landscape within the county and talks about the economic impact of childcare, both broadly, but also specific to Montrose County. The second section, which is parent preferences and needs, is really where you get the deep dive on all of the responses from the, from the survey effort. So if you want to take a deep dive there, there's lots of really good information about people's perspectives on childcare. And then Section 3 is really where we look at the demand analysis. So what is the overall demand for childcare, licensed childcare in particular, and how does that compare with current supply? And that section also includes our overall recommendations for addressing some of the gaps that we identify in the childcare infrastructure. So in terms of context, of course, demographic trends in the existing childcare landscape are really critical as, as part of what guides kind of our approach to childcare and identification of needs. The county overall is home to about 9,200 children. About 2,600 of those are under age six. That's the demographic we're looking at. We're looking at this like pre-kindergarten childcare needs. The proportion of kids, which you can see in the, the top graphic, you can see kind of the age profile of both the county overall, but then also individual communities. City of Montrose is really similar in terms of its overall distribution to the county overall. And as you can see from the, the graphic on the bottom, that line chart, the forecasted population of children countywide is anticipated to increase over the next 20, 30 years. And that's both in general, kids under 18, but also the green line, kids under six, is forecasted to increase. So we know that those trends, based on what the state demographic says, will continue to increase, putting additional pressure on childcare infrastructure over the coming In terms of what, what exists right now in Montrose County, you can see from the map that, that most childcare facilities that are currently in the county are concentrated in the city of Montrose. So right now, city of Montrose is certainly operating kind of as the hub for childcare, really serving a full county-wide, a full county-wide demographic. But it is true that the county is classified as a childcare desert, which means it has relatively few childcare options for the population of children. And so the technical definition there is there's more than three times as many children as licensed childcare spots. That, that puts you into this childcare desert category. Currently, you've got about 10 preschools or childcare centers. Only four of those currently serve infants. And you've got about 15 licensed family childcare homes. That means someone who's providing licensed childcare but doing so out of their home, and their capacity is capped based on that if you're six or 12 children. So in total, those licensed childcare facilities and family care homes can serve 741 children every day. And as we get into the demand analysis, we'll talk about kind of how that relates to the demand for licensed childcare, which is above that 741. The report also really details some economic impact calculations. This is based on some statewide studies as well as some national studies, but we've taken those numbers and applied them to Montrose, and there's a lot of detail on that. I'll give you kind of just the, the high-level results are that the childcare, generally speaking, is really considered a, a, a high-impact social investment, both for the child who's receiving that care, but also just in general. There's a handful of different ways the childcare actually influences the economy. The first one we talked about is the immediate economic impact, which means people spend money on childcare, and then those people spend that, and then those people spend that. So the way that those dollars actually ripple through the economy, the estimate on that for Montrose County is about $16 million in economic impact. Another effect we look at for childcare is called the enabling economic effect, and that basically means that by having childcare, you enable more people to participate in the labor force, and that generates additional wages, it generates additional economic output, and, and then that continues to circulate through the economy as well. And that is estimated at about $50 million for Montrose County. And then we also have the investment effect, in which childcare spending actually generates individual and community returns based on how it impacts the actual child receiving that. And so that means that statistically, that shows higher lifetime incomes for those kids, lower incarceration rates, lower welfare expenditures, and improved worker productivity over the life of that child. And that is estimated at about $9.5 million. I know those are big numbers. Those are not all dollars that you receive tangibly in Montrose County, but those are impacts that are generated based on the Montrose County childcare infrastructure. Now, I want to give you a little highlight of some of the survey results, the Parent and Guardian Survey. As was mentioned, you know, we had a great response rate from, from people across the county, including people living or working in the city of Montrose. And so, you know, we asked a lot of questions about, you know, what kind of care are you using? What are your challenges? And I'll walk through just some of the real high-level components of that. Most of what we'll look at today is specific to the county overall, but in the actual report, if you have any specific questions about just the city of Montrose in particular, we do break those out by geography where possible. So there's, there's some additional detail in there. And I'll start with kind of a statistic from the data that you can see at the top of your screen. But again, there's that 2,600 children, six and under number for the county overall. But I also just want to highlight that 69% of those kids have all of the parents that are living in their household in the labor force. And so really high need in terms of the proportion of these kids that are going to need some kind of childcare in order to enable their parents to work, because they do not have currently a state home guardian or parent in their household. So when we asked folks, "Are you using any type of childcare for your kids under six?" About two-thirds said, "Yes, we're using it right now." About 1 in 5 said, "No, we don't use it." And then another 15% said, "No, we don't use it, but only because of COVID." So that was kind of based on some restrictions there. Among the, the 19% that had said, "No, we don't use childcare," the most common reason for not using it was affordability, so indicating that, that some of these folks would like to be using childcare, but just can't afford it. On kind of the green bar chart side, we also asked folks that, we asked folks that are using childcare, "What kind of care are you using in a given week?" And you can see here, the, the proportions are relatively high for a lot of these. That indicates that people are using more than one type of childcare in order to kind of pull together their scheduling needs for any given week. In fact, on average, Montrose kids under six are in almost three different types of childcare every week. And that we attribute largely to just the limited availability of what folks need currently in the county. Back to looking at it as a childcare desert, there's, there's just not enough options for folks to get in the exact kind of care they want for every day that they need it. And so they're, they're employing a lot of different strategies. Childcare centers are, of course, a really common use, a really common option for folks as our adult relatives and other friends and family, as well as licensed family childcare providers, part-day preschool programs and full-day preschool programs as well. You can also see up to a third of folks are actually arranging work hours among the adults in the households in order to make sure someone is home with the kids. So a lot of kind of cobbling together different structures and different schedules in order to meet the needs of, of the family. When we asked folks about what they would like to change in terms of their childcare, you can see the responses there on the green bar chart on your slide. So convenience and location was, was a prime issue for folks. So finding care closer to home, or finding care closer to work, or also changing the hours or days that care is offered. So again, trying to get into care, you know, the, the proximity issues, I think, are really tied to kind of the distribution countywide, where, as we showed on that map, so many options are concentrated just in the city of Montrose, which worked well for some folks, doesn't work well necessarily for everyone in the county. I also want to highlight that for those that said they want to change the hours or days, it's important to note that, that there's a really substantial portion of your workforce that is engaged in the healthcare industry, so about, so either working in a hospital or other, some other healthcare, which often have really atypical hours. And so even a higher proportion of that industry group said, "We really need, we have different needs in terms of scheduling." So that's an important characteristic to think about as we think about some of the needs in the county, or really accommodating some of your strongest industries, we're saying, "The schedule doesn't work for us." The pie chart on this slide shows you a little bit of a response around affordability. We already talked about how affordability is a barrier for those that are not using it, but I also want to acknowledge how kind of the, the perception of cost breaks out among folks that are currently using childcare. Only about 23% of respondents said, "It's not hard for us to make those payments." Another 27% said, "We can cover the cost without too much difficulty." You have about half of respondents saying, "Yeah, this is manageable," or "This is not a problem." But then the other half saying, kind of indicating different levels of difficulty in terms of making those payments. So you look particularly at the, the red pie chart and the orange pie chart. Orange saying, you know, covering that cost is a major difficulty for our households. And the, the red pie there showing, "We're only able to afford this because of assistance that, that we receive." That could be assistance from friends and family, that could all... That could be assistance from friends and family, that could also mean public assistance at the state level. Challenges faced by both families and providers. You know, some of the key challenges that families are facing are finding someone that they trust, so finding someone they really feel comfortable leaving their child with. About fifty-three percent of our respondents said that was a challenge in the past year. And then costs, so affordability is also a key challenge for folks. On the flip side, when we ask providers about what some of their challenges, cost also comes up for them, but kind of in the opposite way. And so saying that, you know, the pay in this industry is very low. It's very hard to make ends meet on the salary or hourly wage that folks are receiving. Even if you're an in-home provider, it's hard to manage those costs and staffing costs as well. And so the childcare industry is often kind of between a rock and a hard place in that it's hard, providers need to charge more for their services in order to cover costs and pay a wage that is attractive and that is livable for their staff. On the other hand, it's really hard to charge families more because they're already struggling with the cost of care. And so we're a bit between a rock and a hard place in terms of the economics of the industry. That's really common in this industry, kind of in a lot of locations, not just in Montrose, but we certainly heard it as a challenge, both among families, but also among providers. Now, I'll just spend kind of a moment giving you an overview of the demand analysis. Again, there's more details on this in the report. But at kind of the highest level, we looked at how many childcare spots are available. As I mentioned before, it's about seven-hundred-and-forty-one kids per day. And how does that compare to the proportion that said either are currently in licensed care or are on a waiting list, or express that that is their preferred type of care? And that's how we get that demand analysis. So we're showing that right now, demand for licensed care is nine-hundred-and-thirty-three spots per day, which is almost two-hundred spots more than currently exist. So already, there's a shortage of those licensed childcare spots in terms of supply and demand. And when we forecast that over the coming years, based on the projected increase in kids under six living in the county, we can see that that gap is forecasted to widen unless capacity for childcare changes in the county. So what do we recommend in terms of actions that can be taken to help address some of these gaps we've talked about? I'll give you the real high-level kind of overview of these recommendations. But there's more kind of action steps and details within the report. And I also want to highlight that these action steps are not necessarily for one entity in particular, but they really do take kind of a collaborative effort in terms of accomplishing these. And that collaborative effort, you know, does involve at different stages, sometimes UVA and childcare resources, sometimes Kathleen's Group with Bright Futures, and looking at the overall kind of childcare infrastructure, but also public sector collaboration from city of Montrose and the county as well and other jurisdictions. So it really is not a single task or a single silver bullet to solve this problem, but really a collaborative effort among all engaged parties. So I'll just run through these quickly, and then we'll wrap up. The first is just to keep tracking these metrics, keep watching and seeing what's happening with childcare, where demand is, and how capacity might be changing as well. Number two, evaluate potential for publicly funded childcare resources. We're seeing this more and more throughout communities where they're saying, you know, there is public good here, and we'd like to contribute to that. This helps us, this helps from an economic development perspective, as well as just serving our households and families. Number three, develop and fund a scholarship program for income-constrained households. This would be similar to CCAP, but supplemental to that. There's a handful of communities throughout Colorado who do this already. Four, develop a pipeline of childcare professionals and support current professionals in the childcare industry. So really working on that workforce side, there's a lot of challenges there, even in finding and retaining those folks to work in this industry. So adding support to that as an economic development perspective. Number five, consider options for expanding licensed childcare in the region with a focus on infant and toddler care. Talked about that shortage in terms of licensed childcare, that's particularly acute for infant care. Number six, encourage large employers to provide onsite childcare services. So we think about school districts and hospitals as maybe early pilot programs for this, providing care for their staff. Number seven, identify and offer support to non-licensed childcare providers in Montrose County. It's also really important that there be good resources for folks who are not going to pursue licensing, but this is an important element of childcare, and so we want to make sure that those groups are supported and that we help families find trust and security in those options as well, even if they're not licensed by the state. And number eight, provide more easily accessible information about CCAP, that's the state subsidy program, but also just providing more information in inappropriate languages about available care options. So with that, I will kind of, I'll kick back to Rachel just for a moment before we take questions to talk a little bit about some of the work that UVA has been doing about getting the word out around this and continuing conversations around childcare needs.
Thanks, Molly. So we just wanted to take a second before we open up to questions so that you know that we did meet with Bill Bell and Ross Valdez last week, and we had a very productive meeting with them. So we wanted to make you, let you know that that has happened. And we understand that most of the American Rescue Plan funds that have been received have been allocated, including the four-hundred thousand for the new childcare center that's partnering with Colorado Outdoors. And based on our conversation with Mr. Bell, we're asking the city council to earmark a portion of the ARP funds that they will receive in 2022 for childcare. So this will give us time to more fully understand how the state of Colorado intends to spend the money that the legislature has budgeted for childcare, and also to work more with city staff on how to fill the gaps. So we wanted to thank you again for your support, and then we'll just open it up for any questions from you guys.
All right, I have a couple of questions. I'm assuming that the legislation that was passed in the state of Colorado this year is going to help you out a little bit. Do you see that as an asset, providing additional daycare?
Absolutely, there are a lot, and Kathleen has all of the different options. There's a lot of money coming down, so that's why it's going to be important to kind of watch and see what happens. And with that money coming from the state and federal funding, to find out what gaps we still have here in Montrose.
As far as needing earlier and later services, is that driven somewhat by many of the folks in the area working out of town or working maybe in the Telluride area that you're needing later and earlier services?
Yes, I would say it's driven partially by that in terms of, it's driven partially by commuting, but even more by the industry in which people are working. And so we did see, you know, we kind of run some cross-examinations around who is saying that they need which of these. And it was mostly driven by folks that are either working in hospitality, which has later hours typically than childcare centers are open, or by folks working in the medical field, so that have sort of a seven-to-seven shift or something that may start earlier or end later. So yes, to some extent by commuting, more so by the industry regardless of where their job is actually located.
Do you find many of the industries doing like ten hours a day, four days a week? Is that having any effect on you?
You know, we didn't specifically ask about individual work schedules in terms of whether they're working four-tens or working regular schedules. It was more just using kind of the industry as a proxy. And so I would say, certainly in the medical field, we typically see that, that there's going to be more often a longer shift on fewer days, and if that really drives it for that industry. It's harder to say in the hospitality sector, just because those schedules tend to be less set and less structured, and they also fluctuate a little bit seasonally.
When we do have some areas or some industries where we have other shifts working, whether it be a day shift, an evening shift, or the midnight shift, how does that affect the childcare aspect of it?
Yes, that certainly has a big impact on when people need childcare and what options are available to them. So when we have folks working a night shift, it's really, really hard, particularly for a single parent, to get coverage for a night shift. You know, I think we certainly see, when we ask folks, how are you managing this? When there's a two-parent household, there's a lot of folks that are saying, we're just structuring our life schedule so that one of us can be with the kids. And that's what we see in a two-parent household typically in sort of a night shift situation, when one is working a night shift. That becomes a lot more complicated when it's a single-parent household, certainly. And it becomes more complicated when you have two adults in the household that are in kind of the same industry or that have overlapping shifts. So absolutely, that has an impact. It's a real challenge to provide that kind of care. And that's often provided, most commonly by informal networks of care, so friends and family, or even sometimes licensed family care providers. But there's certainly a need for additional support around folks that are looking for that type of schedule.
And I would assume that people who live out in the county that may be driving into the community to work those late hours and early hours would be a certain asset to them in that respect also.
Absolutely.
David, do you have any questions?
I don't believe I really have any questions. I do appreciate the study and the resulting report, and I believe that we learned a lot from it, some of which perhaps we knew anecdotally, others are brand-new to us. But I think you guys did an excellent job. I guess one question I would have is, and I don't, I'm not quoting this verbatim, but in the report, I recall, and in the earlier presentation, words to the effect that to provide greater assistance to unlicensed care facilities, could you expand a little bit on what you mean by that?
Yeah, great question. So those unlicensed or those license-exempt folks are going to be, that sort of includes nannies that are providing care. It includes friends and family that may be providing care on a regular basis. It also includes folks that are providing childcare out of their home, but are caring for fewer, for or fewer kids. So there's a handful of that type. And what we mean by providing support there is really more around training and information to those folks. And so because those folks are license-exempt, it means they don't have to comply with any specific regulatory standard or any training that the state provides. But it is certainly a group of folks that both the parents would love to see their care providers have some formal training around, you know, even if it's first aid or, you know, kind of emergency-type care, but also even other enrichment-type care kind of training options. And so when we talk about support there, we're mostly talking about resources for training and improvement, also information about whether, kind of how to become licensed if they want to do that. So really just making sure we're kind of connecting with that group of folks and making sure they are connected to resources that they might want to take advantage of.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention here, too, that forty-five percent from this study, forty-five percent of families are using that kind of care. So in that big number, that's eleven-hundred of our kids are using this kind of care. So it's a really important group for us to reach out to and get in contact with to make sure that our kids are getting the care that they need.
Thank you. When it comes to school-aged children, I know that in some districts and other areas of the United States, there are schools that have an early morning or after-hours program where school-aged children can stay a little while, come in a little early, stay a little later in the afternoon. Have you looked at any of those options?
You know, for this study, we really focused just on those kids that are too young for school-aged care. So we didn't actually look at that as part of the study. That is really common, and I think that's a real asset to parents. We know that childcare needs don't stop when a kid goes to school. It just changes the hours and the dynamics that is needed, but it's not something that we looked at as part of the study.
And I guess that would be just a temporary thing, because most schools aren't in session during the summertime, so that does create additional problems there. All right, any other questions, David?
No other questions, just one comment I'm sure you do all know. But if not, city council is considering two ordinances dealing directly with childcare on first reading tomorrow night. So I think this will be helpful to the ongoing concern that we all have about appropriate and sufficient childcare.
All right, well, we thank you for your time and your input.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda today is the lease agreement for the eighteen-hundred Pavilion Drive, Montrose Botanical Gardens. Ross?
Hello again, yes. So city council is going to be considering a new lease agreement for the city-owned property located at eighteen-hundred Pavilion Drive, commonly known as the Montrose Botanic Garden. If council does desire to review the lease in the future, staff can place the item on the October nineteen, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting agenda. So just a little bit of background, the city and the Montrose Botanic Society entered into the current agreement back in nineteen ninety-six, and it expires in twenty forty-six. So you're considering a new twenty-five-year agreement or lease, which will expire in twenty forty-six. The reason being that we're looking at this kind of, what you might see as a midterm amendment is that we want this lease to better reflect all of the growth that the Botanic Garden has experienced over the last twenty-five years, and their plans for future growth as well, as well as expansion of the services that they offer to the community. So for example, this could be considered environmental education center at the Botanic Gardens. Currently, the MBS is utilizing this property as Botanic Gardens, and so these changes are going to be reflective of that. It's going to be a clarification of the guidelines surrounding the approval process. This includes the conceptual master plan. And that would, you know, also ensure that some of these improvements that are being considered are being reviewed by the city. So an environmental education center being one, covered equipment and material shed being another, Hakal Homestead, Historic Cabin, a lot of different structures that are in the works for the future and making sure that these are in line with the approval that we have for other city-owned properties as well. Another significant change to the agreement is that while the city has been able to provide water to the Botanic Gardens in the past, it hasn't necessarily been a guarantee. And so we wanted to make sure that we were planning for its current use as well as its future use. And so we are providing free-treated water and committing to free-treated water as well as irrigation water in the future. And what that looks like is that there's one-point-nine million gallons of treated water that's committed to the Botanic Gardens, as well as twelve-point-three acre shares of irrigation water as well. Their one final adjustment is to the agreement is reflecting a description of fee-based use of the Botanic Gardens so that it can reflect their use for rentals as well as photography sessions. So if there's a wedding, that there's a policy and procedure in place for that. We have attached to your packet the original draft lease that we created, and then the final clean lease that we both agreed on. And then you'll also notice in that final clean lease that there's a master plan attached, and we actually have the Montrose Botanical Society here today with us to present that. We, you know, would like to thank the Montrose Botanical Society for all the work that they put into kind of honing out and ironing out some of those little details to hopefully better reflect their current operations and plan for the next twenty-five years as a community asset. Thank you.
David, any questions? We better get this one right, we might not get a vote on the next one. I don't have any additional questions, Anne, any kind of...
I'm here to answer any questions that you have, but I think, you know, the main interesting part of this is to hear from the Botanic Gardens about their exciting plans for the future. And as Ross said, they have a lot of big things planned. And so we all as staff just wanted to make sure that council is aware of all of those plans so you're not surprised by the exciting things that start happening at the gardens and that they have the opportunity to share those with you and then formally get support of council as they move forward through what will be, I think, you know, years in the making of the grand plan.
And is there someone from the Botanical Gardens that would like to make any comments to us? Give us any additional information?
Thank you very much, and we do want to thank Ross. He was amazing getting through a very frustrating situation for us.
If you would give us your name still.
Oh, I'm Lorraine Shid, the current president of the Botanical Society. And this is Rob Clapper. He's our grounds improvement, per capital improvement, and we're both on the board.
I know the graphics.
Yeah, he's the brains behind the operation. We came to City Council about two and a half years ago, and we presented our master plan then, but evidently new staff felt that it had to be approved by the council, which we had... And actually, we involved city staff in designing the conceptual plan two years ago. Virgil Turner, who's no longer with the city, worked with us. He worked with our landscape architect, and he actually directed where a lot of things went on the conceptual plan. So with new staff, new protocols, we were kind of stymied a little this summer, about four months. But we also understand change and how we need to work together to move forward. So we're very thankful we are going to be able to continue our twenty-five more years of lease, and even though it's a little different. But we feel there's some really good changes and guarantees for the gardens in there as well as for the city. And so I think you have a copy of it, don't they have a copy or not, in your paperwork? And it changes. It's a conceptual plan, so things change. And the city donated, we bartered two years ago for the Hakal Homestead remnants, working with Jonathan Horn and the city attorney. And that's going to be hopefully up next spring. And then we also acquired when the city decided to move the amphitheater further down in Cerise. Then we asked again for the little cabin, the remnants. And so we're in the process of waiting for the building permits. We submitted them months ago, but we understand we had to go through, actually, not only the lease agreement, but also a new site development plan for the whole twelve point three acres that includes a pavilion. So we were a little flabbergasted, but I want to thank Amy in your planning department, Bill in planning, Anne kind of got us started, and Ross has been amazing helping get through all of this. So we're really close. So hopefully we can get our buildings that we had to go up in June and July, hopefully will happen before the snow flies, which it's flying already. Do you want to say anything, Rob? No, it's been quite a learning experience, and the city's making changes, and we, you know, we're part of that change. And we're thrilled to be able to continue our volunteer efforts with the city.
Well, we appreciate that, and I think it's a tremendous asset to us, so thanks very much.
Thank you. And I know you were there for our open house, and Dave Frank was there. Barbara's been there before, but I didn't see her recently, but thank you.
Well, I would thank you. You have an amazing facility. I think it is a real asset to this community, and we look forward to the continued partnership.
Well, thank you. We're all volunteers, so hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, guys.
The next item on our agenda is twenty-twenty-one sanitary sewer cured-in-place pipe bed award. Mr. Breeze, Mr. Murphy, are you guys handling this together?
Well, I think this one I'm going to handle, and then I think Scott's got some other ones on the agenda here, so. This is for the annual renewal of our contract with In SituForm for cured-in-place lining of sanitary sewers. We've done this for a number of years, and this is an innovative way that's been used in the last twenty, thirty years to restore the integrity, the structural integrity of the sanitary sewers without digging them up and replacing them. It's all done robotically through the manholes and creates a new pipe within the pipe. And this year's project is largely focusing on Townsend between Main Street and Niagara in preparation for some of the mill and overlay that CDOT is going to be doing. We wanted to try to make sure that we have those sewers structurally in sound condition that the additional loading and work that they're doing doesn't cause additional deterioration, as well as it's part of the overall comprehensive plan to try to rehabilitate all of those sewers on Townsend that Scott is working on with some of the projects for, on Townsend. So we are going off of the bid that was done last year. That was an annually renewable contract and recommending the extension of that contract with In SituForm for a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will do the majority of these lines on Townsend. The twenty-twenty-two project will continue on with that, and we will probably bring in that to you early into twenty-twenty-two to finish out Townsend as well as some other lines that we've identified.
Okay. And I don't recommend to anybody you go down there and watch these guys because I found out they put you to work. Any questions, David? I don't have anything additional. All right, we're going to item D, the Birch Street replacement. Let's take a five-minute break. All right, let's bring it back into session, and we'll go with Birch Street Bridge Replacement Project Contract. Scott, Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So up there on the screen, just for the public's benefit, I think this should all be in your packet also, is a screenshot showing where this particular bridge is and what we plan to do with it. So Birch Street is, comes off of Hillcrest, is the road that feeds the Black Canyon Golf Course. Just east of the golf course entrance, that street crosses the Lutzenheiser Canal, which is about a hundred CFS irrigation canal that snakes through town and leads to, I believe, it's eight residences kind of at the eastern end. It's the only way in and the only way out. That bridge was constructed, we're guessing, when that neighborhood was initially developed. We've been keeping an eye on it over the years. We've been having some troubles with some soil losses into the abutments. Inspections have revealed that the abutments and foundation are pretty severely compromised to the point where it is now time to replace the bridge. Concurrent with that, there's also an undersized AC water line and a damaged sewer pipe. So everything that needs to be fixed at this crossing is getting fixed all in one shot. So the product will also include a replacement of those sewer lines and upsizing, replacement of the water line as well. The bridge that's going in there is pretty similar in style to what we did on Auto Road. Here are some pictures just to give a feel for what they look like. This is an aluminum box covert, so those come in little pieces, and we get to bolt them together. Pretty fun adult-type Legos. This one was also on the Lutzenheiser Canal. This was back in twenty seventeen. Once complete, it'll look pretty similar to that there. So if we do our job right, people won't even, or it'll continue to serve them for fifty years and won't even know there's a problem there, so. So then going into design, this is a small enough project that we designed it in-house within the engineering department, put it up for bid, got bids from five contractors. The low bid was United Companies, which I think is, the arm we're working with is Telluride Gravel, which is a subsidiary of United Companies, which is a subsidiary of Old Castle Southwest Group or something to that effect. So if you see all those various names around, they're kind of one in the same. United has consistently bid our work in my eight years here, and they've never won a bid. So we're excited that they finally won a bid, and they have a solid reputation. References check out well. We're confident that they can have the horsepower to be able to do the work. So that bid was for four forty-seven, nine seventy-six, thirty-eight. Because this product was done in-house, there's no additional survey or oversight costs or anything like that that we need to award with this, so just the construction contract. As far as the project impacts go, so that is the only way in and out of that cul-de-sac. So we will be constructing a temporary bypass road around the northern side of the existing bridge to have that all in place so that people can come and go as they typically do without any major impacts to those residences. The work will probably start up mid-December. They'll start to mobilize to the site. The idea is these kind of products have to be done when the irrigation is off for the year, which is typically Halloween through April first or so. And so the plan is to be up and running by the time the water comes back on in the spring. And all residences along Birch Street, we've given this information to them directly too so they're aware of what's coming down the pipe. And then as far as financials go, so we knew this was going to split two years because of the irrigation shut off. So between the two years, we budgeted five hundred and sixty-five thousand, which is about perfect. The, that's, so we're under that budget, but some of that budgeting is just a factor if you don't know how that split is going to happen between years. And so, you know, between those two numbers, what we have budgeted in both years, we should be well-covered for however it pans out. That includes the water and sewer utility replacements come out of the utility enterprise funds, and the balance comes out of the general fund for the bridges. So that five sixty-five is made up of three different budget numbers in two different years.
Questions, David?
As I recall, that bridge is to the west of the entrance to the golf course, and then of course it is also access for those eight residences that you mentioned. So where will the alternative access be during construction?
So the bridge is east of the golf course entrance. So the golf course will be kind of uninterrupted. The bypass road will be on the northern side. There is an excerpt too. Let me, actually, I think I have a drawing out here. Yeah. So this is the existing golf course kind of entrance area right here. This is the Birch Street Bridge. We'll actually route them off kind of to the northern side of the parking lot around some trees here, and then come in. And that's because of this waterline work here, this angle comes in pretty tight. And this had a really nice mature tree that this resident had here that we wanted to protect. So we've purchased a temporary construction easement across this corner here to allow that bypass road to come in and service both residences. Obviously, emergency access, so if someone were to call an ambulance or something, they'll still be able to get in there, but also trash service, so they don't have to wheel their trash cans or trash all the way out to the golf course side. The trash service will be just as usual for them, so.
Thanks.
What's the life cycle on the new bridge?
There's some that we have that are over twenty years old and still in really good shape. So I'd say, you know, by the manufacturer, they'll say forty or fifty years. I think realistically fifty is probably reasonable. You know, they'll always sell you a longer life sometimes, but I think in this case, we go with aluminum because we have pretty corrosive soils, so they don't see a lot of the attack that you see with, you know, steel structures or even concrete to some degree can have some, be attacked by our soils. So I think fifty years, especially for this loading and this application, is a reasonable life expectancy.
Coming off of Hillcrest going east to Birch, is that strip along through the parking for the golf course? Is that actually considered public street, public roadway?
Yep, that's right of way. You kind of get, I can pull up the map here. But yeah, all of, generally, for practical purposes, all of Birch Street is public right of way.
And I think if you'd put a golf ball catcher right at this entrance to that overpass, we could pay for it in a few years.
We can track.
Reselling them, yeah.
Or go and walk the canal once it drains, yeah. Some money to be made there.
Are you have the questions, Dave?
No further questions.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Our next one is landscaping service contract award recommendations. Mr. Scheid?
Hello, thank you, council. So this is a contract award recommendation for landscaping services around several city facilities, including right here on the city campus. So this is a contractor that maintains landscaping, irrigation, and what turf care is needed to be done around our facilities. Reasons coming to you now is because our contract just expired with this contractor, and it just happens to be our existing contract was with S and E Ward's, which is the low bidder coming in on this next set. So we are recommending awarding to S and E Ward again. Again, they're working for us currently and doing a great job, and they happen to be the lowest bidder for the next set of contracts. So with that, I recommend awarding this to S and E Ward. Moving forward, this is a one-year contract that can be renewed up to three years. And that's the same contract we were just, we were just saying, we entered the third year this year.
Do they do any work for us in the wintertime?
They do not. We have a separate snow removal contract where a contractor like S and E Ward would be removing snow around our civic campus, but not under this contract.
Okay. David?
No questions.
All right, thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Spatial events, alcohol permit. Lisa Del Piccolo?
Thank you, Mayor Glaspel. The city of Montrose, more specifically Dart, is applying for a permit to serve alcohol at the Block Ninety-three event on Thursday, October twenty-first. Because the alley will be closed for this event in conjunction with the service of alcohol, it does require city council approval. We have put up a poster as required by state statute for the required ten days and received no comments. And I would like to request that we put this on the agenda for the October nineteenth City Council meeting.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Anne, anything to add to that?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go to general council discussions.
I don't believe I have anything, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything. I would like to say that we had a great employee golf tournament, and I don't think I won first place again. I'm beginning to question the poll that I have around here.
Maybe next year.
That's what you said last year. It was a great turnout. We had a great time. Any staff comments?
None for me, but for perhaps a reminder, and we'll share this again tomorrow night, that we're excited about the first event at the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater coming up this weekend. And so maybe even tomorrow at our council meeting, we could share a little bit more information about the amphitheater and that project because it was a long time coming and a lot of work went into it, and it's very exciting to see it getting used this weekend for Oktoberfest, which is a fundraiser for All Points Transit. It's not a formal city event, but of course, the city is excited to see our first event in that facility.
And the date for that?
October ninth, Saturday, October ninth.
Thank you. Steven, anything?
No, sir.
Chief Hall, would you like to comment?
I do. I just have one, I think, message for the community. Here in the last week, we have a individual or a group of individuals that are driving around and shooting up property windows, cars with a pellet gun. But what makes this really concerning is they shot a juvenile- really concerning is they shot a juvenile who was walking down the road in the stomach here just this last week. So we've advertised, it's a gray newer model Jeep Wrangler that is appearing in the Montrose Daily Press. We've advertised it on Crime Stoppers and we're really looking for any information that the public may have in regards to this crime because it's serious and very important that we catch these individuals. And so you can definitely contact the police department directly or certainly Crime Stoppers. And Mayor, do you happen to have that number handy?
I was afraid you were going to have.
We'll, we'll, we'll get back to the.
But they, they can also access it online.
Yep.
And the intent is if you can leave a tip on that and it's totally anonymous, then you can also get a reward from that.
It's a good program and they can absolutely do that online too, so. I just thought I'd bring that up because it's something that's serious that we need to get resolved quickly.
Do you have any comments on the work going on next door?
Yeah, I do. Actually, this, this week, you'll see concrete trucks in and they'll be pouring the stairwell stairs for the new public safety project and also the second deck of the police department operations side. So that's a pretty cool thing and here on October twentieth, we also will be having a steel topping-out party. It's not open to the public, but it's just kind of a ceremony, I guess, celebrating the next phase of the, of the project and our public works manager, Jim Scheid, has agreed to speak at that event and, and give us some of his thoughts, so it's going to be great. And then lastly, go ahead.
Will he be wearing his?
He did say that he would be wearing a tie on that day and that he actually discussed also maybe shaving his beard, but maybe more to follow on that.
Is that a one-way discussion?
Yeah, more of a one-way discussion. And then Greg Story, our IS director, has once again saved me and our Crime Stoppers number is nine seven oh two four nine eighty-five hundred, so public can call that as well. And that's all I have unless you guys have some questions.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg, do you have any comments today on nineteen? Did you want to talk about, we might get a new TV camera to scan the area?
On our website, we do, we used to have live feeds of different areas here in the, in town showing south and then up on the, by the sports complex. Both of those cameras have failed and so we are currently in the process of putting a new camera up on top of the big water tower. We thought up top, up top would be a good place to, good vantage point, so we are working on that and we are working with engineering team and Dave's crews and all those folks to get that up, running, but it probably won't be until first quarter next year.
All right, thank you.
Do I understand correctly that that will not be a stationary camera, but it will be maneuverable in some fashion?
So it will periodically, I think it's every ten minutes, will take a three hundred and sixty-degree image and then that is, you can, when you pull it up on the website, you can maneuver through that image three hundred and sixty degrees. So it's not a true live feed, but just because of bandwidth, because it's a really high-quality camera, so it is taking a, a lot of pixels in each photo. It would be, it would just kill our network to livestream, that sort of thing. So it'll be really cool and we're excited to have it up. We've got to do some technical stuff to work some kinks out as there always are, as we saw with our first Zoom participant this morning, but we'll, we'll get it going and like I say, hopefully have that ready to go first of next year. Thank you.
We want to thank you for that and also thank you for keeping us online and working and keeping us straight so everybody's watching what we ought to be doing. Thank you very much. Any other staff, any comments? If not, then I will close the work session. Thank you very much.